Some of these things, they have some coalitions or some, some areas in Columbus have people that form a group that go to home, volunteer, pay for them, there's community involvement.
Question number two is directed to Mr. Gadsden. What would you do to improve the quality of life in our community? What would you do to improve the quality in our community?
Thank you for that question. Right now, right in my mind, being their example, because we as a people need to come together. And I just told Reverend Ham here, it would be nice, because right now, the people who really care about this community are here. Mr. Chappell contained us last week, we had a meeting at the courthouse. And the guy from River Valley Commissioner, Regional Commissioner, shared some fantastic information, but only two people came. I invited almost thirty or forty, just the younger generation to come and get involved. One of the things I can say right now, if I look at the school people right now, they're caring. They want to improve the community, but it takes a community, not part of the community, to really improve it. What's running in my back, getting involved. What do you mean, Mr. Gadsden? Help clean up our neighborhoods. Helping each other, being nosy neighbors. Stop tearing down people, instead of beating them down, beating them up. I'm still gonna be that example.
What would I do to improve the quality of life in our community? First, I work as planned to try to bring jobs in, because where there's income being brought into houses, there's less, uh, probably will be less attractiveness by people to do things that would tear out our community. Uh, to improve the life, give this town somewhere that can, where the children that graduate out of college, out of Andrew College, the life, the quality will be where they can see our city growing and want to stay here. Improve our city by getting jobs in, getting our parks up to date. Give our city a makeover, a redevelopment, that we can take pride in our city and take pride in what we have. Because as you change the perspective of something, you change the mind of the people that are looking at it. And that would improve our quality of living in our city.
The next question is directed first to Reverend Ham. What can be done to improve race relations in the city? What can be done to improve race relations in the city?
Well, race relations in the country is out of control. Uh, race relations in our city, what could be done? We can start working at the small sanctions. Uh, working together in our small sanctions, in our churches, in our, uh, schools, in our, uh, recreation departments, in our football departments, start working together there. Because if we can't work together in the small sanctions, we'll never work together in the large sanctions. So what can we do? Try to just reach out and bridge the gap between once another. See what it takes to bridge the gap. See where we are in certain places, and see where they are in certain places. And try to bridge the gap that is holding us apart, that we might improve our racial relationships.
I'm gonna pick you back up with Reverend Ham there. He said exactly almost what I was gonna say there. To improve our relations with, what? With everybody, as a community. Not a black community, or a white community. People ask me, and Mr. Jenkins said earlier, I'm not a Democrat, I'm a Republican. I am that I am. I'm just a man walking around, smiling, happy. And if we can just become happier, enjoying ourselves, enjoying life, we can really reach out to people there. And I wanna pick on Ms. B for one second. I went to church a couple of weeks ago, and Ms. B got up and started just, just talking. I seen some joy from her face, and the people were just so happy, so happy. That's all it really takes, that joy, that looking, that caring. When we have that really care, that compassion, that integrity, that honesty, the patience will improve other magicals. Without materialistic barriers.
The next question has several parts. And we're gonna start with you, Mr. Gadsden. Some communities have removed Confederate statues. How do you feel about the removal of the blunted cars? Should be moved to a cemetery or some other place, why or why not? For Confederate statues and cars?
Actually, there are two Confederate statues.
One is already in the cemetery.
There's one over in Greenwood Cemetery, in downtown there. And I've been asked this question a lot before. I say, at this point right now, that statue represents, we know it represents, we know Andrew Jack you stood for. And when I look at it, this is my personal opinion, I can't let that affect me. Yes, the statue needs to be down there. If you all remember, and you all can remember, there used to be a waterfall there, water around there years ago. When that statue was hit, I believe I was on council then, no, I think I was new to the council. At that point, I asked the question, why was it put back up? Why was it put back up there? So, if the community feels this should be put down, the community, we can get it down, both of them. There's a lot of, we know our history, we know history, not his story, our story. To get a better perspective on life, that may lead into the Pledge of Allegiance. I was asked to say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm not gonna do it, because I did some deep research on that. Wow, did I learn a lot. It took me out of the ignorance I've been in. And this is one of the things our younger generation needs to be really, really need to learn, our history, not his story.
I did some research on, to find out when it broke out in Clarksville, what was the meaning? Because I, I do believe that a lot of people don't know what those statues represent and why they're up. And I started researching, why is there one in Cuthbert amongst all other places? And I found out that there was one in Cuthbert, because back in the, when they had the war, Andrew College served as the hospital. And from the hospital where men of the soldiers died, they were then buried in the cemetery, and that's why that's there. Now, do I think it needs to be removed? Kinda have mixed emotions. Because a lot of times you remove something, people forget about it, and we end up right down the same road again. And to backtrack on going right down the same road, sometime we have to see where we been, in order that we won't go back no more. Uh, does it stand for something that is racial, yes? Does it stand for something that is division, yes? Does it stand for something that is not good, yes? But if we take it down, will we remember that and not allow something else to drive us right down that road?
That was a powerful question and some powerful answers, and, uh, I'm gonna leave that alone. I'm sorry, give me my hand. Let's move to our next question, and we're gonna start with Reverend Ham this time. Reverend Ham, what can be done to improve the financial condition of the city? The financial condition?
One of the things that I think could be done is we have to find out what is breaking us, and why we are not striving financially first, in order to improve what is the problem. Uh, once we find out what's causing us the problem, and why we're not growing financially, then we can move forward with that. Uh, and as long as we don't have any outside jobs coming in, we always don't have financial, because the revenue is not gonna rise like it's supposed to. So I think one of the things that could be done is we can try to bring in as many businesses that we can, knowing that we probably cannot right now endure a major industry. But we can bring in smaller stuff that will help us to bring revenue into our city to better, give us better financial, instead of everything falling on the bikes of the taxpayers.
Very good question. It's a good question, because most of you are major taxpayers. You own your home, you own cars, really, majority of you are what the corrupt business is. And one of the things, the city right now is in a pretty good financial position. There's a couple of factors, I won't go along, I'll go for two minutes, that really, really, I want to say, as far as my business perspective, one of the things the city is designed for is to create an environment that businesses want to come into. Our median, my median income range for Landville County is thirty-four thousand dollars. And not too many people even make that. How can I be safe with this? The school is one of the major reasons that businesses won't come in. Now, I'm sorry, Mr. Jenkins, but what Mr. Jenkins was saying, schools want to come in, because that was considered a distinguished school. Actually, distinguished school, so I have to give you some kudos on that. But at this point right now, I'll put to you like this. People said Walmart wanted to come here a while ago. Walmart never wanted to come here. Never. They said the mayor was blocking, not defending him. No, the mayor, you know, anybody is a businessman. You buy land, and the land is really wealth, not money. This is part of it, here's, we really know that, wealth is not money. Wealth is land, homes, things that you can leave to your children there. So with the school, and the city has just signed an agreement to work with the county there. I- ISO ratings, from the fire department, ISO, I don't know what the term means, but, okay. The city is at good ISO rating, that's saving the city so much money there. That means the city's in great conditions from a fire perspective. I want to have the firemen come and stand to us, but I'll leave that, 'cause I'll go and grab them.
Let's start with Mr. Gadsden for this question. If you are re-elected, and Reverend Ham, if you are elected, what will you do to see that repairs are made on streets, sidewalks, and railroad crossings on all sides of the city? Streets, sidewalks, and railroad crossings on all sides of the city?
Well, one thing that's happening right now is with, if you've noticed, we have a company that's coming in that's looking at our sewage system. And what they're doing is, you said, they've probably been working on some of the streets here. They actually have a new technique where they can look at our pipes there, underground pipes, with a camera, and place this type of material under it, and make pipes, well, resurface or refinish the pipes, or reseal the pipes, without digging up much road there. They've been doing that for a while. Now, with the railroad tracks there, with the rubber, where we need the rubber bumpers there, I spoke with Southern Railroad about a couple of months ago, because those tracks, especially on the Andrew Street or Hood Street, they're horrible. I went on the track every day. There's a railroad company said to me that we as a city couldn't do nothing with the tracks there, but we could put rubber bumpers on the side there. We're working on that right now, to put the rubber bumpers on the side there, so the cars can go easy on that. If you have, you notice how the signs has been torn out around here? I'll pull down, I drove around the city about, well, rode my bicycle around the city, there are fifteen signs that are torn out. This is where we need community involvement. If the signs are being torn out, come, come to the council meetings, and I urge you all, when Reverend Ham is elected, to come to there, to be our nosy neighbors, so that we can find out why they're being torn out, because they're not falling out by themselves. This is why we need to really work together. And the group here, I know you all work together, but this is our younger generation, we still need help with them. It takes a village, maybe an army, to really help these kids right now, it really does.
I say thank you, Mr. Gadsden, for your support. Uh, what would I do after elected? I would work with the city, speaking to a regular to our city manager and city, who was in charge of our road and street department, to make sure that all of our streets and our whole city are, are looked after on the same note. For one instance, that it was brought to my attention, then on Andrew Street, some of the sidewalks were patched, while on the other side of the town, streets were totally torn out and repaved on sidewalks. So that it was brought to my attention, so what we do, we make sure that does not happen. Then if we gonna tear out a sidewalk on one side, we tear it out on the other side. If we gonna pick up trash on one side of the town within a timely amount, we do it on the other side. Now, working with our railroad, we'll work with the railroad, question them, and push them. Push them and let them know that this is what our city wants to have done. Thank you.
Our next question will plug directly to Reverend Ham first. I would choose our all-time city of the record, list the top three things you would seek to improve. The top three things.
The top three things I would seek to improve, just as I have this to, in the care in my own mind. First, our economic development. Uh, because that, that is most important to me, economic development. Second, is our relationship amongst the people, our county and our city. And our third thing is to stretch, uh, for our employees of our, of our city, those that are employed by our cities, to make sure that they know that they are stakeholders. Because if they know that, they'll give more at the end of the day while they're working. Instead of lollygag, they'll give their heart if they know their stakeholders more than just employees.
Okay. What I've been doing since I've been on the council is really looking at, and finding out, because we are a community. How can we improve community relations? Because I'm not the government, I'm not the council, really, you are the government. And if you look at it, people keep saying that, uh, well, people will say sometimes, uh, we depend on this, we need this, we need that. And I talk to young people, I say, you know, I said, you need, and always asking, how come we can't do it ourselves? Ourselves, we are the, we are the biggest, we are powerful people. And we don't know that, we are powerful. Somebody keeps telling me, what, what about the store, what about the store? Well, if you don't want, well, not, I'm gonna off the subject, but if you don't want Disney discount there, and if you have issues with that, stop shopping there. Another thing we can do, once again, honesty and trust, community involvement, community involvement. And I'm talking to people right here that are involved. Like I said, we need the younger generation in here. We, at this point, really need to go out and really work with them. How can we really educate them about our history? What we can do, volunteer, paint houses, pick up things, help, help. Instead of reaching out, depending on someone else to do something you can do, or we as a people.
Our next question will be directed to Mr. Gadsden first. How could recreation for citizens, especially children, be improved? For example, the swimming pool in Andrew Street?
I'll give you a brief history before I ca- I worked for Disney as a productivity executive for eighteen years. When I moved back to Cuthbert, and also had a, uh, I shouldn't talk about this, kitten transplant, a panda's transplant, and three strokes. When I came back to Cuthbert, the pool was nothing. You know, I reached out to the community, and I wish Marion Butler and Curtis Butler were here. I reached out to them, because the city, well, I thought the city wasn't doing anything about it. They went up there, they painted the pool themselves, took care, went in there, and, not the pool, but the outside of the pool, you know, it was yellow. They did that for free, for nothing. And one of the reasons the pool has not been open, well, I'm the one that really fostered, really fostered on getting the pool open. Until I came back, the pool was never open. It wasn't, it wasn't open for a while there. One of the issues we're having with the pool right now is, we can't find people who want to become lifeguards. We're in the process of, right now, we have two or three candidates that we want to get, to go, to get certified ASAP, because they can have certification for a year. We had a blessing in disguise over the years. Jennifer Jenkins, she was the teacher at the school there. She had been lifeguard there for years, but when she left to teach in Edison, it was almost out of luck. Until this day, we've been out of luck. We post every year for lifeguards. Well, no. What was the second part of the question?
Recreation in general?
Okay, and as far as recreation is concerned, Federer Clark, it's been, and Federer Clark and the teachers he worked with, have been doing a great job with that football team there, that they have. The director of recreation right now is, the guy that owns the townhouse, I mean, the doghouse there. And what we're doing with recreation right now, we have the baseball teams there, but it involves community involvement. Community involvement again. We have to work, as the song says by DOJ, we're all in this thing together. We gotta work it out, we gotta work it out.
What would I do on, on our pool? And I, last year when our pool didn't open, I asked myself a question, because I wanted to know, because my boys wanted to know why the pool wasn't open. And I found out that we couldn't, we did not have a lifeguard, was the problem. How I came up with it, I said it was in my agenda to work on. We need to find someone that hire them, not just during that season. But we need to find someone that is want to be a lifeguard, hire them, and put them on the employment staff during year-round service. Maybe in the other seas, the off-season, where it's not time for the swimming pool, or it's not time for pool. Maybe they can find another job in our city, give them a job in our city. That way we can keep them, instead of having them shifting in and out. Find them, hire them, and then if there's not find someone that has capabilities, train them. Send them off to be lifeguard trained. Uh, they might do, give them a job here that we might retain them. What for our recreation in general, and I, I heard Mr. Gadsden speak about our recreation of baseball, I reminded that that's our county. Our city recreation, what we're doing for our city recreation right now is merely nothing. Because our facilities, our city recreation are not outstanding. Uh, our park right here, Dave's Comfort, Dave's Park, the softball field is not playable. The basketball courts are subpar. What, what we do, we need to do, we need to make sure that those parks are, so that we can have a city league softball, city league baseball, city league basketball. Bring up our stuff, our, um, things to our children through our, through the city recreation, which would be different from the county recreation department.
Reverend Ham, then Mr. Gadsden, how do you feel about expanding the city limits?
My question would be, would it be beneficial to expand it? Before I, we jump into it, would it be beneficial to expand our city limits? Uh, what benefit will we have from expanding it? What would be the pros and what would be the cons of expanding it? Uh, before I give a certain answer on it, I would wanna know the pros and the cons of doing it, before I say whether I'm against it or with it. I would like to know the pros and cons, what are our benefits of expanding it, against what, what problem will we run into of, of expanding it?
At this time, no. One of the reasons why, until we can really work together as a county, and once again, like I told you, just this year, we've signed ordinance to work with the county more closely. Then we need the schools to join along with us. Andrew College is doing a great job, as you all know. They've really opened the gates, and they're really, they're really fostering, and businesses actually are looking right now. But then we need a school to join with us. And also, with hospital here, we have basically a bit of, only real full hospital in a probably twenty mile radius. And then Edison, Webster, the both of them is in all there. We've got a hospital here, we've got a great city too. We've got a great fire department, a police department, and we have a great college here. Low crime rates, and one thing I forgot to mention, we have very good water. We have an aquifer that's like two miles from here, that has fresh, clean, spring water. We used to have a lot of wells around here, underground aquifers. People in these other larger cities, others, other cities there, their water is terrible. These are the things we need to really look at here, from a citizen's perspective.
Let's start with Mr. Gadsden this time. Are there affordable houses needed for working people? What can be done to ensure that?
This is one of the things that means, Mr. Chappell, we went to a meeting just last week, wasn't it, Mr. Chappell? A guy from River Valley Regional Commission came down and explained the whole process to us. Once again, with affordable houses, we need to really look at our population. And one of the reasons our population is decreasing, because of the school system. Not because of jobs, the school system. And when I say, and I wanna pick on the school system, it's just quality of education and hearsay. Hearsay can be dangerous. The word is getting out with this area, Dory County, we have Atlanta, and we have rest of Georgia. But there are a lot of areas looking here, and if we see, you all work together, but if we see the whole city working together, trying to get things out, businesses look at that. The goal of the city is not to bring businesses in, but to provide an, uh, an environment that is comfortable for businesses. Comfortable for businesses, and that's happening now with Andrew College, with their new four-year-to-reap program, the nursing program there, more students are coming here. They're also trying to reach out to the high school, to have more kids go there. But then more parents are moving, more, people are moving away. When they move away, and they move their family away, the tax base decreases. And I'll say this one thing, one of the things we need to look at, is we need to have a go tax pretty soon. To provide the quality of services, we still have a great tax base here. Great police department, a great fire department, but we haven't. And I hope the school has one of another rate, I'm not too sure, I'm gonna leave that alone there. Once again, it's back to community, it's back to community. So I'm gonna need you all help. Help me, please, support me. Help me, so I can help you, so we can just, well, this is my community. I love you.
As a board of a housing, uh, being a former employer of the housing authority here, I understood that our housing authority, even though their car project has become the living facility for many people, uh, and has become their permanent residence. What we need to do is look at a way that we can build some house, some houses that are, are capable for, for our residents to stay. Because what that does is it give us a chance, you have a lot of children come to Andrew College and say, but a lot of times children don't wanna stay on campus, and if they have a housing that they can stay in off of campus, it can grow. Uh, and I don't, I don't wanna defend or beat, but I wanna say this, our school system, uh, has taken a lot of beating from the public and people about this, about that. Uh, but I work in the school system now, and I have, I'm going to defend it as I sit here, and say that a lot of what we hear from about our school is not true. Uh, and people might be moving away, but they're not solely moving away because of our school. The quality of education, and I know not time for them to say, the quality of education at our school is not going down. The myth is that Pachala School System is educating our children better. But I raised a question the other day, how could that be? If they have the same teachers that we had here, are leaving? If they have the same teachers that we had here, are leaving or going to Pachala? So you mean to tell me, the only problem is that when they was here, they weren't doing their job? So it goes to this, affordable housing, we need to build somewhere that people can stay outside of the projects or apartments of housing authority.
Do you think the city should provide a building for use as an emergency shelter during severe weather?
If we have one that's adequate. If we have one that's adequate to be provided, I think they should. But if you don't have one that is adequate, I don't think you should stick your neck out, that'd become a liability. Just to say you've done something. Uh, if we don't have one that is adequate, I would say no. If we have one that is adequate, then yes.
To answer that question, do you want to, do you want, do you want one? Do you want a fall shelter? Because really, who will pay for it? I mean, you'll pay for it, with taxes, with tax money. You'll pay for your tax money. What we can do is really come as a community, work with the churches, man, I'm always seeing them in person experience. I wouldn't stay at the church, uh, right on Andrew Street. It was really nice there. They had room for, oh my goodness, probably five hundred people inside the gym there. But once again, if we're because of community, we, we won't have a fall shelter. But if you want one, it's what the community wants. We all can pay for it. I said we, not just we all, because it comes from taxpayers' money. Community? Do we think a community center is needed? The reason I pose that question that way is you are the government, you are the council. The council is composed of us, not just six, six people that's from the nation. We are a community. And that's your question, do we need a community center? Because if we have one, if we built one, once again, you all that owns homes, own homes, will pay for it. Now, there's only two that own homes, I can't, well, there's people that don't own homes, which, they won't be able to pay for it. You can't, you can't, you can't really say anything against that, but then, community, a community center. How about coming together and have discussion parties? Talk to the whole community.
My answer would be yes. We do need a community center. Being from a younger, uh, generation, or a younger, one of the problems is having boys, myself, and no, and girls, younger knowing is that they have nothing to do. They have nowhere to go. They ha- and, and they're leisure, they, they have nothing to really do. Yes, we do need a community center. That would give them something to do outside of the normal schoo- once school is out for the summer. That's nothing. That's nothing. Yes, we need something. And I know that it will cost us, but we must understand that what, anytime that you are redeveloping anything, it's gonna cost you something. And if you want to ever bring our city up to par and bite to where it is at, we got to spend money to get it there. And yes, we do, we need a community center for our children. And that's, that's on the close of that. Our community center also can back up when we do have storms come. You can kill two birds with one stone. You can have a community center that when storms come, you can turn around and use your community center as a shelter. So instead of having two fields, you can have one, two birds with one stone.
Thank you, John. Now, did you see a man of all, did he have?
We're in good hands, in good hands. Uh, now, it would just be simple, raise your hand, ask a question, and we want, uh, both candidates to respond. All right, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gass, and this is me, but what happened to the girls and the boys club down at Webster? On the corner, didn't they have the girls and the boys club down there at Old? We can say, say, what happened to them? Do you have an idea?
Oh, yeah. That story is, uh, on my very vocals right now, and I was on the community for that years ago. And basically what happened with it is, really, just community involvement in the community there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Because that's why I was thinking about, you know, the environment that the children do when you build these places, they're not gonna stand like that too. Because that was a nice start down there, I thought it was.
Yeah, I did too, I thought.
I think the last meeting they had, they had two people down there, I think. I don't know, I don't know what it was. Nothing to do. How's it, eh?
Any comment to that?
Um, speaking of the, of the community center, not just for the youth, we have senior citizens that don't have anything to do. A community center is for everybody, okay? They could be playing games, they could play, playing double card games, or the board games and things. It's, that, that, like everything else, need to be organized, but we need it, okay? First of all, if we can get a splash for everything else.
I'll wait on the question.
Okay, why isn't it that, the, since you are on council, Mr. G- Mr. Gass then, why isn't it that some of you put, bring something to the community? Now, we are the community, you are the council. And the community comes to the council, why isn't it, uh, we could have a meeting, or even bring something to the council, even though we gotta be on the agenda, and if we come, you don't give us much time? One other thing, y'all give more people more time than you give the average citizen here to address something. If we, I know you're gonna have to have make sure, make, make sure, what do you call it? Matching money to get what you want. If you put it on the agenda, not on the agenda, on the slate or whatever you all do, fathers are committed to get involved, okay? That's a good spot for race relations, that's it, because you're gonna start with the children, okay? Then you're gonna bring the adults in. Now, the citizens have a center to go to, to eat and whatever, but everything is a certain hour, everything need to be controlled. But why isn't it that some of you on city council, and the county commissioners, do that? Instead of marking everything down, why can't you all do that? You know, because y'all don't understand the community, you don't. You just have the fun issues about the gas, about the water, about what you're doing. And a lot of you on council, all you do is support your personal agendas. Would you, I want to ask that when you go back on council, you do, Mr. Gass then, Reverend Ham, if you get on camp, council, consider the truth that was the community and our concerns? Please?
All right, so if I can get a question out there?
Yeah, why can't?
I think I heard, I think I heard. You all, if you get on, determine the way, also with the community, to get input from the community to do some of the things that the community wants.
Okay.
That was one of them.
Yeah, that, you get the other one later.
If I get on, I, I'll do the same thing as prior, listen to the complaints, listen to the concerns, and, and basically probably try to stretch the time that you feel that you're not being heard. Uh, and then we must understand also that all of our complaints sometimes are just, might be gripes. There's a difference in a complaint and a gripe, and I don't want to offend anyone, but I just say it like it is. There's a difference in a, in a complaint and a gripe. And sometimes we have to, as, as, as sitting on councils, we have to find the difference in between them before we can address the issue. But if I get on, I will, I will listen to concern before going forward.
We are the community. I ride my bike a lot for a reason. I talk to everybody. I meet no enemy. I get involved. But then when I look at it, we are a community. We've got to work together. We're all in this thing together. And that's why when the question is asked about a community center, I ask you all. Do you want to?
Yes.
And you all are the government, if you really look at it. If you really want it, it should be done, and it can be done. One person, and you all know this, can't do it by themselves. But with a community, working together with integrity, honesty, caring, that's one of the issues that's wrong with our, just our political system right now. No care, no honesty. I would rather work around people who really care and trust when I work there visiting, and I had a good job, I had a very good job. For years. And I should tell the guys I work with, when I was an executive, a, a productivity executive, and what that is, that's an individual, make it real simple, that looks at better ways to run a business or corporation, or a project. I said to them, I said, whether they have someone, like I said before, who cares, who trusts them, and honors, than someone with a PhD, a player, his degree. Because, you know, you can find that super intellectual person that will do you down every single time it's about. But the person that cares, that work hard.
See, uh, lots of important thing in it, I think, what I'm hearing, this current, what I'm hearing, I'm saying, if this is something we want, then all we gotta do is do that. So I guess, what's a good way for us to get started? If we want a community center, if we need more recreation, you tell us, what is a way to get started? How do we address the city council? Who do we address? You tell us, how do we lay it out? I hear some people out here want to get something done, so you tell us, this is what we gotta do, not tell us how you want to do it. How should it be done?
And one of the ways, can you speak to my heart?
Speak up.
One of the ways, can you speak? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
One of the ways, there's a, a number of ways, is really, instead of us working separately, we have one club here, one club here, one club here, one club here, let's all come together. If we're gonna have a meeting, just be all together, so we can talk on one agenda, one accord. And then it comes to the council, and you say to the council, these are the things that we really need to do. Because numbers, uh, nu- voices and numbers is very powerful. Since I've been on the council for eight years, I've never been to a council meeting, well, with more than ten people showing up. Now, I've been to some council meetings where there have been a lot of people that show up, showing up, but it was because of
I know.
Just like last week, or some people, because of something negative, negative. I said before, let's stop beating people down, let's beat them up, coming together. We have a lot of great groups and organizations around here. If they could pull together and talk about one agenda and one accord, that'd be so powerful. Just like Nike says, just do it.
I think one of the ways to do it would be, first of all, I vote the right people in the place. That's gonna push the agenda of the community and not the agenda of ourselves. Uh, hear you, hear what you have to say, listen to what you have to say, and try to make what you want to happen, to happen. It might take years, but if, that we show you that we're working on what you want, then you can understand that we're trying to develop what you want. So first thing is you gotta get the right people in the right place to make it happen.
Got other questions, Mr. Gass?
Question, question? You got a question? Who is next?
Thank you, Rose.
Okay.
Mr. Gass, and, and, and thank you for coming in, and sharing these things with us, and what you want to do in your vision, vision more. My question is to you, and you guys come up here and talk stuff and tell us what you want to do, what you're gonna have to do. Now, we're gonna hold you to it, okay? Now, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna be there, and I'm gonna help you hold this thing. Now, this is my problem. Now, I'm not gonna let the city take credit for the railroad tax. That was me.
Thank you.
It took me four years to do it. Now, Mr. Jerry Gates is the president of the Southwest Railroad. The reason that one of the bottom of Andrew Street is not done is because the city and the city manager will not pay for the asphalt at the bottom. That's why it's not done, that's why all the rest of it is done. So, now, I've been working on this thing to get everything cleaned up, and I know you guys are gonna, gonna follow through and help us on this. But let's not have so long a response now. I have turned in thirty requests for these vacant houses and stuff, and only two fit up there. That's thirty, I got a hundred and two. I'm way behind, okay? So we're gonna hold you guys to it. I want to know if you guys gonna come up out and do this stuff. All these things that we're asking for, you guys tell us we can get. We know it's gonna cost us money. Anything you ask for, the taxes are gonna go up, okay? And I've been to the city council, these guys are actually working, but we had some people that been in the court enforcement that wasn't doing the right thing, but now I think they're starting to do it, okay? So, who knows, you guys are that, and you guys are gonna help us get this thing done, right?
The other thing I, I, I guess I, I hear is that the need for speaking on the council to report out to the public.
Amen.
General forum, other than just city council. How would that be accomplished? I, I would not be accomplished, I said you inform the community, now, place and time, other than the council.
Well, we can, we can try to inform about, what's about doing happy? That's one of the things of building relations with the community. By being more, uh, community-oriented of a city council, that way, that means you're, you're more out talking to them, or just setting up meetings, this is a meeting to come and to meet with the city council, and just to talk with them, and to, uh, so that you can give them, the people updates on what's going on. Because like I said before, even if it takes two years to build a community center, senior center, if you're telling them that the steps that we are taking, uh, maybe a lot of times people would trust the process more to persecute you while you're trying. So kind of lay out what you're doing, meet with the people more than just at a city council meeting, be open.
One of the things I've been doing for years, I probably have, one of the things I've been doing for years, I probably have, have done a great job at it. Well, no, I'm not gonna say that. But once again, when I ride my bike, I talk to everybody. Who did I have to talk with this morning? And thank you, Mr. Darling, because he said the county meetings, don't we talk? We talk, I talked to Mr. Brown there, and I said, this is Miss Sealy, this is Miss Sealy here. Anyway, I spoke to Miss Sealy, Miss Bussey, just last week. One of the things I wanted to do, well, one of the things I'm trying to do right now is with the, uh, Manny Jenkins Daycare Center, is to reopen that up, so that we can have meetings that come in there, we can play chess, chessers, just sit there and just have a good time, but socialize and talk about not only issues, how we can be a part, and how we can lift up our community, our community, not my community, not your community, our community. I continued, I go to the schools there, was it school yesterday, with Representative Gerald Green, uh, when they presented the Reach Awards, there were four, there were four students who got a Reach Award. And what the Reach Award is, is if a seventh grader or eighth grader goes to school for four years, I'm not, I hope I'm saying this right, and they have great attendance, great grades, and so forth, they'll have a full-paid college scholarship. Any college they want to go in Georgia, anywhere they want to go in Georgia. There's only a few people that show up there, but I went.
As far as, uh, getting the right people, voting right people in, a lot of times, if you have the right, if you vote a person in, but still don't know what the community itself wants, you still not considering the agenda. So if the community wants something, why can't they vote their opinion to, uh, to the county, uh, city council? Why they can't they vote their opinion, uh, either come to the meetings themselves and put their, uh, complaint or want, so to speak, on the agenda, so it could be talked about? And as far as the houses are concerned, it's not. And as far as the houses are concerned, we just not talking about the houses. I've been talking about houses, trying to get that done myself, for many, 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 many months. Now, I did take, after he came in one time for the, uh, and brought his list, uh, something was done. But sometimes it does, it does take, as, uh, just a senior, it does take community help with that.
Where's the question?
I'm not saying a question on this.
Uh, we're no question. Uh, we're no question.
Uh, Mr. Brad. Good afternoon, evening, night, whatever it is. I actually have a question for, a separate question for each candidate. Uh, for Reverend Ham, uh, I support you. However, you said earlier that you think that the Confederate statue uptown serves as a good reminder for us of the history that we've gone through? I'd like to make the comment that the Confederate flag also serves as a reminder for what we've gone through. Question is, would you be in favor of having the Confederate flag fly uptown? That's the question for you.
And I, I didn't say it's a good reminder, I said it's a reminder.
Well, let me rephrase the question then. Okay, well, let me rephrase the question and leave good out of it. You said that it's a reminder, that we need a reminder. The Confederate flag is also a reminder, should we have it flying uptown? And what's the difference?
It's all in there.
If, if we, if we went along with that theory, that because it's already there, then every oppressive symbol that is already in place, you're saying that we should leave them there? Just that one?
Uh, watch this. So I do not think you should put the flag there. But a lot of times, when I have seen is that we have come from and revert right back. And so we forget where we come from. Even though I'm not a supporter of that. I'm not saying it is a good, I mean, it's a good, I think it's a reminder. And it's not a good fact, it is a bad, it's not a good, poor, a bad. So we need to, we need to know where we come from. So we won't turn around and go back to where we come from.
I, I appreciate your answer, and I would just like to make a comment on your answer. I personally, like I said, I support you, but I personally don't need that. Mr. Gads, Mr. Gads, you have made, as an answer to several questions, you said that the community, the community needs to come together and do this, the community needs to come together, fix this, the community needs to come together and fix that. Is that not what we pay taxes for, is for the city to come together and fix some of that stuff for us?
How do you get the community to come together? The community needs to come together on a accord, and work together, on better relations? Or just work with each other, because, like you said there, community is involved, community is involved with each other.
That's, that's really not the question, get out of that. You were making a statement that some of the things that need to be fixed in this city, that the community to come together and fix these things, as opposed to the city. We don't have equipment, we don't have bulldozers, we don't have, isn't that what we pay taxes for? Is for the infrastructure of this city to be cared for by city employees from our taxes?
Yes, but when the community thinks that, you as, well, you're not citizens, we as citizens, we come together and fix things.
We're citizens. You may be a citizen, because that is a part of it, I mean, it's nice to have this, this nice little, really good, good feeling that they're talking about, but to get things done, we have to get down to business. And business is not as good feeling as getting things done. We pay tax dollars, the tax dollars come to the city, so that they can support the infrastructure, fix the infrastructure of this city, isn't that not what we pay taxes for?
I think for that, but then when I say as a community, we come together, the community, to really work together as no, as no, no, no limiters, help amount with one another there, not fix the thing, it's a thing.
But my question was fix the thing.
Well, not, what, what, once again, as one of the, Mr. uh, allude to earlier, was the fact that, come to the city council, come to city council, and we can do the agenda, and we really address that.
Before my turn passes. I would like to say one thing about that, I mean, you guys make it so difficult. I mean, you can't say anything in the news, okay, so that, that's already a fact.
Can I say what?
Uh, let me... Well, you have to, I mean, some, some places, uh, say for instance, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, they have a section on their agenda called Public Commons, where anybody can talk about anything during that part. But for some reason, the boards and the councils and districts, they have it established, so that you have to go beforehand and get on their agenda before you can say anything, otherwise you can't speak. And then when you do speak, you only have five minutes. And that is limiting our speech and our ideas. But the other thing that I wanna mention, before I'm done, uh, this, uh, this, uh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Johnson said something about you guys, us coming to you guys. Why can't y'all have a forum, uh, uh, what do you call it, five, what do they call the thing? Uh, Five I Chat or whatever, where you have a, uh, you establish a forum and invite us, so that we can talk to you outside of the city council town.
Not any formal meetings at all, and I know for legal reasons, you're not gonna answer a question if you get it back. But if you come to the city council, uh, out of a meeting, then you could have a back and forth, and if there's something, you kind of know what I do, by putting it forward for a mention, that, I think that's what we're talking about. Uh, I know most jurisdictions have community meetings. Now, if they were in, you see, you sit there, you ask anything you want, you know? You try to get information, and that, I think, is what's there. I know you're a benefit citizen, when the legal says, or the legal, I'm a benefit citizen, so you say, you can't say, you said, that's a good thing, I understand that. Now, uh, we have another person, we have, we have a real good time. That's what it got me, that's what it got me. So, he's killing, but it's all gonna be like, I did, killed everybody. I, I went out and all side chat, and I told him, said, uh, you married worse, he said, he was like... Uh, you missed the first section, where it had questions. So, what we'll do now, is if you do that, uh, just introduce yourself, talk about your platform, or some things you'd like to do, and then after that, we'll go back to questions from the audience, uh, in fact, we'll probably go back to all those questions. But then we'll, we'll let you, you might get some of those nice warm questions that we answered. Um, I've been mayor for twelve years, if you'd like to come here.
I've been mayor for twelve years, um, I, I'm running unopposed this time, and, um, I, I, you know, I praise the Lord for that, but I've been running unopposed. When I came, became mayor, my first and most concentrated emphasis was on the finances of the city of Comfort. Comfort was in dire straits. We had a million and a half dollars that we were behind on the gas bill. We had all that issues that precluded us from getting any grants. All that has been cleaned up, everything has been cleaned up in the twelve years. Uh, we didn't have to borrow any money to do that, we did that by running the city efficiently. I wanted to comment on the gentleman about the taxes. And, uh, this may be the inappropriate time for me to comment about that in my two minutes, but... The city of Comfort has the lowest mileage rate of any surrounding town. I, I mean, I want y'all to understand that. I, I mean, you can name any town in Southwest Georgia, the city of Comfort has the lowest mileage rate. In other words, we charge less for property taxes than any other city around. We have a lot of citizens that are on fixed incomes, and we realize that, and we've tried to keep that down for that reason. It cost us over a million dollars to run the police department and the fire department, those two entities. We don't receive but about three hundred thousand dollars off of household property taxes. The rest of that money, to run those two entities, comes from sales tax money, uh, franchise tax money, inventory tax money. The, um, the shortfall has to be made up by our utility departments, water, gas, sewage, and trash. A lot of the budget for the city of Comfort is already appropriated, because, you know, you've got overall fixed expenses, and you have limited funds to do that with. So, yes, you pay taxes for these services, but we are limited on what, what we can do, because we feel like the, the tax burden on our elderly and people on fixed income is already great enough. Now, you open up your tax bill, and you look at your county bill and your school tax bill, it's gone up, but the city of Comfort's property taxes have not gone up. Uh, we have, we have made a great effort to run the city efficiently, and provide our citizens all the services we can afford. The council that's been on there, pretty, basically the same council's been on there since two thousand and five, we work together very well, and this is not, same with you, man, I'm just talking about the present past, I'm not talking about the future. Uh, I have broken one tie vote in twelve years, and that had over the amount of the money we're gonna give our employees a raise. That's the only vote I've had to vote. So, the council has worked together, we have worked trying to upgrade the infrastructure of this town, the sewage, the water, uh, the fire department, the police department. Is it perfect? Absolutely not, it's not perfect, there's always room for improvement, but we work very hard with what we've got to be as efficient and possible.
Uh, Mr. Jenkins, he was addressing me, can I respond?
I don't know whether, let me inject this first.
There were a couple of questions that we talked about, we want a, uh, community center, and then having an emergency shelter, and, uh, somebody one, uh, you know, made a comment, the, the people in the audience understand that it may take more taxes to do some of the things, but if it's something that the community wants, then it may be worth fighting, to raise the taxes, costing, doing everything else is gonna cost, and, and we understand that, okay?
You, you are, you covered my...
Oh, okay.
All right.
Uh, earlier, um, Reverend Ham said he didn't know, uh, Mr. Jackson said he didn't know, about expanding the city limits. You know, when you go to most of the cities around here, the city limits, like Fort James, it's not fine out, it's out. Why, you know, wouldn't it be feasible when Jackson helped bring taxes? You know, to help with, uh, some of the things that we do.
You don't, I don't think I know that.
Well, what, what you're saying, there is some truth to that, that if you would be able to, to gather more income, because you would take more properties in, you'd take more houses in, and at the same time, those citizens would expect services when you went out. And, uh, water would not be that necessary, sewage would be very, very, very expensive.
But remember, you know, if you go out to the, like, uh, eighty two,
Right.
very sewage out there, I mean,
Right.
and expand, you know, like eighty two each way. That would...
The answer is no.
Well, you know, you can annex part of the city, it does not have to be, the word I wanna use is contiguous, it does not have to just be, you can go out and, and, you know, annex anything you want to, but there is a process, and it has to go through the lead selection, things like that. I have, many, many years ago, I lived out on the Columbus Hill, which was out of the city, and, uh, we didn't have water out there, and I, I made an effort to try to get those people out there to, to try to go to the city and be annexed. I almost got ran out of town. So, what you're saying, what you're saying is gonna take a lot of intestinal fortitude, but it is some truth to what you're saying.
I got, I got a question for each candidate, then. Uh, for Reverend Ham, you know, I'm gonna do my questions, then I sit down, and wait on the response. Reverend Ham, yeah, he said that he's got a vision, he wants, uh, bridging to, uh, bridge to that, uh, because he was planning to expand on that, what is, what is his vision? Uh, for Jackson, you know, the question is, is, is that he needs to have a reference for community? Well, what I mean by that, there is community, and when first you're forced to do, what the community wants, that what you say, so you can make some of that. And, uh, question for the mayor, uh, I, I do a lot of work, and, uh, and, uh, I make friends to, uh, for, you know, dash line, you know, mark, the line for the dash, too. I, I find that, that, uh, the, the employees of the city do not know how to get, uh, by the way, how they, you know, for each house. Because I'm working over there on, on, uh, Randall Street, and they came over and marked one dash line, and I, I've got three dash lines. What, what would happen if they came, uh, one dash line, and not marked all the dash lines, and I happened to hear a package or something?
That would not be a good idea.
I know, I know, right. Is there a, a message that we can come up with that?
They have, they have a protection too, which should work. I would like to get to get to that, if you talk about it, and find out what happens, so we can keep up the happening.
Yeah, and, and plus, it's two weeks, and he...
Uh, expanding upon my vision, my vision is simple, just to go out and work with each other. Um, to, to bridge the gap, to work with each other, to bring us to a working relationship with each other. Uh, like I say, church to church, person to person, community to community, um, county officials with the city officials. That's what I mean, bridging the gap, relationship gaps, working with each other, a simple vision, to work with each other, stop, uh, isolating each other like we are different, and work together to, to be for the betterment of our community. Is that satisfying?
Yeah.
All right. One of the things I'm doing right now is, I'm wanting to try to, well, I'm, I'm opening up the Manny Jenkins Daycare Center, and, uh, me and my brother are really overseeing it right now. And to open it up, and as I said earlier, to just be in there, to talk about issues in the community, how we can uplift the community, while playing, while playing checkers, while playing chess there, also, any city groups that would like me to come and really talk to the city groups there. My door is always open, and I think we come in and address them, it's whatever the community wants. And try to, to be there.
Oh, yeah.
It's...
Okay, well, you think it would be a good idea, you know, talking about the university center? Don't you think we can find a lot of these big old, you know, the buildings and, you know, work, work on that, because there's still a building up to one stuff around here to follow them? You know, I got a lot of old buildings, like you said, like the... You know, you got a lot of old buildings, like you said about the Nannan Jenkins. And that would be a good idea to me, you know, somewhere, but the building's all empty, and it's probably a good idea to think about that and just think about the community, like, like, you know. Well, thank you, because you must be reading my mind. That's one of the things we've been doing. I, I need some work there. As a matter of fact, I've had about twenty young men. I was down last week, they're, they're Mrs. Yes, for Paintwell. And I just need to find out on the charter there that we got it from this hand, what we can actually do on there. It really shouldn't be any problem, but you're anxiety away, and thank you for that. Yeah, I hear you. I got your number.
Sure, yeah. Why should I?
Uh, yes, I have a question. I want to ask, I'll propose something, Mr. Mayor is here. Meanwhile, uh, we always talking about race relations in the community. And you being our, the head of the council in, in Cuthbert. Uh, can you, can you help and work with us to try to break, close that gap? Now, Andrew College is, is very good, and I worked with them, not for two years. You have been very good with helping me with some projects. And I know a lot of you don't like your names called, and you pointed out, say, do let me do it my way. But we, we, we need to know what you're doing, how you're doing, and then working with us. Now, I do go to, I go to all those churches. Everybody knows the churches, know me, but all of the churches don't come to us. And I'm not trying to put you on a, on a, um, scale of saying, bring your church in, but if, can you find a way? Yet, if you can find a good community person as, as a committee, see, there are no community com- committees coming out to community. Am, am I saying it right? Wounded up, I don't know the... So, I just asked him, can he find a way?
All right, so basically, what can he do to improve race relations?
Help us, yes. Close the gap.
Well, first of all, Ms. Kearney, what I pride myself in doing is treating every person that I know and see and deal with the same. I, I pick no favors, and I know that's on a personal level. Um, I think that the ra- race relations in, in the city of Cuthbert are, are not terrible, but yes, we are divided. We, we, there's no doubt about that. I mean, we can, that's the big elephant in the room. I mean, if I say otherwise, I'm proving myself and trying to prove it. And are we divided the ones where we once were? I don't think so. I think, you know, I think we're a lot better than we once were, but we have a long way to go. We need to find a, a, a mutual mechanism that, that, that will, will bring us together, and that's probably through our churches. I feel like we all believe in Jesus Christ as our Savior, and we all have a common belief, and if that doesn't bring us together, nothing else is. So, to me, it's gotta be through our churches. Now, I, I, that's a vague answer, I realize that.
Okay.
But, uh, I earnestly believe it. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have a question, and I want to bring my question to the mayor, because we brought up a little early, I think, before we came in. We were talking about the statue and the park up there. After it was toned down, why was it, it was replaced?
Legally, we received an insurance check that was for putting that statue back up. So legally, we put the statue back up. Not only did the statue not go back up, I mean, the statue wasn't the only thing that went up. The check was for repairing the damage done to the sidewalk, the, the bollards around the statue, the water fountain, uh, the paved walkway. The check was for doing that, and we did not, I, I do not think that legally we could've done anything else with the money.
Why would you do anything? Just give them the check back, because of what the statues stand for, that's what I'm saying.
I understand. I, I understand that statue to some is one of, uh, conflict and, and, I understand that.
It is.
I understand that. It, for some, it's history, it's, uh, I, I, for some, I'm not saying anybody in this room, I'm just saying for some. I would hate to see that statue divide our city. And I will be open for dialogue to what we need to do to keep that from happening.
I think, I think it will divide it. It's a, it's really, it's the younger people really know, if they're taught what it's really stand for.
It's been there a hundred and something years, I, I know that. And, and I, I understand, and I understand where you're coming from, and I, I, all I can say is I will be open for us as citizens of this town to talk about what we need to do. I'm not saying what we're gonna do with it, I'm saying I'm open to have that conversation, a civil conversation. I'm open to it.
See, uh, that's one of the questions that they, they, uh, asked. Uh, of course, the way the question was framed was that if the community, those statues have been moved, and one of the options on that question was whether they would agree to move it into a cemetery. I know it's one in the region cemetery, uh, and the idea was one in, what, ECU? It was not a cemetery. One over there, so one, that part of that question was whether they consider moving that statue with the park now to the cemetery. That, that was just one option that was...
And, and that may be the dialogue we need to have. I, I was saying, we, we probably need to have that conversation, um, and, and I'm open.
They have cemeteries. Yesterday, I saw some city workers working in the cemetery across from the bank. Is that a city-owned cemetery? All the cemeteries in the city are kept up?
But the Longwood Street is private, that's correct. It's owned, it's owned by a church. It is absolutely, and we have, we have done out there, and to the place for some of the people, there's times, and we have most, it's gotten so snaky, we don't, but legally, we really should've done it, but it's always got so bad, we lost. Well, it's got that again. I was thinking where the road is, and one of, this town road is owned by a church, it's paid. One of them did, uh, run out of light. Right, I liked it, but I was thinking, there was some part, before you get to the church, isn't that, isn't, that, that's probably owned, I think. But I, did they buy the whole thing out there? Anybody know?
Three parts.
The church. I know they gotta sign up for it.
I understand. All right, well, yeah.
Okay, I'll go for it, probably. Okay, pair, okay.
Parliament on that.
Okay, yeah, across the street. All right, that's good. Other questions?
Can anyone be buried in a cemetery? Is it...
I mean, the lots, the valuable lots that we have is in ECU, and they are going away fast. But we are going to stay in ECU. You, you, if you look beyond it, you can see where we're going with that. The old Rose Dale, the one we talked about, the city owner, we had, it's, it's, it's full of ours. We just, just didn't have pens on it. Do you know what I'm saying? And bury it like...
I, I have a question for the mayor. Uh, you said that you're open for, uh, a forum or open for a meeting about the statue uptown. How do we go about, uh, setting that up? That wouldn't be a regular city council meeting? What, what would that be?
First of all, I, I'm, I am not opposed to the city council meetings after the meeting staying for a question and ask time. You mentioned it, and I'm not opposed to that. For us to be efficient, and I, I, y'all get tired of me saying efficient, I know that, but for us to be officially run a meeting, that's why we try to limit that to people that've gotten on the agenda. But once we get through the meeting, I am not opposed to adjourning the meeting and all. If the council will agree to stay there, I think they will, you know, letting people in the audience ask whatever they wanna ask. I would, essentially.
I, I didn't quite get the answer I was looking for from that. Um, understanding that, you're saying that we can't, basically, for efficiency sake, we cannot do it in the meeting, in the city council meeting?
You can get on the agenda, do whatever you wanna do.
We're talking about a group. If this, if the majority of the people in this room right here, in addition to some people who are out in the community, want to address this to the officials of this city, how do we do that? I mean, are you...
I'll ask you this, wait till after the election. Don't make it a political thing.
I'm not running things.
I'm, I, I'm just saying, and then, and then, and, and once the election is over, we'll have a town hall meeting, we'll have something where we'll let the people bring that to us.
I'm trying to understand how it's a political thing.
I just don't want it to be an election issue, that's all I'm asking. I, I would like for us to be as civil and as straightforward and as loving as we can be when we discuss it. I'm open to it.
Now, I, I'm not, I'm not...
I'm not, I'm not implying anything. I'm not implying anything.
I'm not promoting it as a, as a election issue. However, since you said that, why couldn't it be in a, are you the one who, who dictates what election issues are?
You know about that.
So, that's what I'm saying. Why, how, how can you say that then? How can you make that thing?
That's my personal opinion.
Be careful that you make sure that you let people know you're making a personal thing.
That's my personal opinion.
Well, after the elect...
I, I, I made, I made my statement, I'm open to that dialogue.
After the elects, what would be the process?
The process would be for us to have some type of town hall meeting like we had last night.
And who would, who would be the people who set that up? Is that a steady thing, or would, would we have?
That would be my responsibility, and I'll take care of it.
Sounds good.
Just, just, after the election, you call the mayor, you all set up a meeting, public signs, and we go from there. All right, let's take one more question, then we'll have a closer comment, and we'll get out of here.
I got one, one more question. Since we got a man in, in one of the city councils here, uh, it is, I, I don't want to be talking about money, justice, voting, and all this need to be done. But with the city workers, it is possible that, that we can hire two or three more city workers, take care all on the street with all the overgrowth, that we might make our community a point community too. Uh, also, uh, having, uh, some education, uh, in, I'm saying this because all the places I've been, if, 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 if everybody is on the same mode, pretty much, in cleaning this, we all can be able to have a very clean community. That'd be maybe, uh, some, some proceeds or five dollars or something for the people, education or something like that, to make sure they're clean and proper.
That's one of the things I addressed when I opened the Nannan Jenkins Center last week. There was twenty young men that were there, and I said, this is our community. I said, when we look at our community, it's representative of us, not just me, you, it's us. And I said, to keep it clean, and to keep it the way we, as a people, want to keep it, what can we do? We just can't blame it just on the city to clean everything, because it's the sea, junking it up? Is the city, cities throwing trash out there? No. You all sitting around on my bike, going to park every day. I see guys in my parking, and I sit there, just relaxing, enjoying life. Beer, keg, and bottles, I don't see a city employee doing it. I see part, part of the community, not you all, because you all wanna hear. And this is, this is issues I wanna address, there's some of these young men. It's just a form. And Patricia Goodman is really, really doing great things, but I'd like to have some people come to, to talk about those issues.
I have one question. Um, I know that flash is picked up.
Me neither.
You know, I have it today. But is there any way that we can know what holiday that flash...
If you really look, think about it. Because, like, with the long thing, you know, about... I don't know what the point is.
And so I asked two of my friends yesterday, and then you can't go a whole week. Is there any way that we can know what holiday?
And the flash is... Don't worry about it.
Everybody needs to be, that's what I, I need to have attention to, but I think a lot of people want to...
We just need to be in the district, this is for small communities.
No reason, that's not, slave kind of way of talking. That's no reason to let it go, whether the people who, uh, whether the people who, uh, put that way about their, about their, uh, because they're, uh, to let it breathe, because it's all, and then we don't wanna raise, don't, don't make no problems.
Thank all of you for your time. Second Corinthians five, seven, say, we walk by faith, not by sight. Hebrews eleven and one, says, "Our faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen." Faith, yes, faith, I stepped out on faith, deceived to become your voice and your visionary to lead our city, and next generation with wisdom and knowledge. Now, I'm asking that you would step out on faith and trust me to lead you. Yes, I stand alone, just as Moses did against Pharaoh, just as Elijah did against Ahab, just as David did against Goliath, Goliath. The plan ahead of redeveloping our city for growth, development, a plan to bring all of our city parks up to standard, the plan of making sure we treat our employees like stakeholders. The plan of bridging the gaps in our community are all huge gaps to a man standing alone. But with your vote and the help of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, he can, and it will happen. Let's get it done, vote David to have him.
We live, they come, they don't have the money, because we don't have a job, because they don't...
I want the job, y'all. Thank you. Thank you. More than coming out. I'm gonna eat you and every single one of you, Mr. Mayor. I say out my name because I just appreciate you, and I feel those vibes. Once again, thank you.
I too want to take the opportunity to thank y'all, and I also want y'all to know that I love the city as much as y'all love the city. I, I, and I don't say this but for one other reason. I've served twelve years as your mayor, and I hadn't taken a paycheck yet. I didn't do it because of anything else other than I love this town. And, and we have a lot of challenges in this town, I know that. But you look at some of the surrounding towns around us, we're, we're, we're the crown jewel of the, of the surrounding towns. I mean, you look at some of these other towns, they're, they're, uh, they have a, they, they wish they were more like Cuthbert's. So, yes, we have challenges, but yes, we have a lot to be thankful for.
But, uh, it comes with the territory, uh, and that several people, uh, get eaten back. Uh, first of all, is not here, Sheriff Fairbank, a lot of...
From the military, twenty years.
We have four and eight, uh, facilities, uh, certain...
The mold that y'all made. Y'all need to get out of it.
Certain want to thank those who listen, and, and sharing, you know, you put this question, uh, on, uh, what we need to do. I do, we're here, so, so, I want to be a certain, if you don't ask any questions about a lot of times, nothing, so I encourage you, go to some city council meeting, go to, uh, whatever, school board meeting, go to county commission. It's one thing to sit there and hear what's going on, and talk about it, but it's better to get on the agenda. And to the elected officials, I would like to encourage you all to have community meetings. So, it's not a formal setting of the council meeting per se.